All right, well Norman, now that we got sound all worked out, whenever you're ready, we can go ahead and call it.
Let's call the meeting to order. I'm Norman Wright, Chair. Who else?
Commissioner Olson.
Morning Eric, or afternoon Eric.
Good afternoon.
Okay.
Mr. Romer, present.
Okay, who else do we have?
Hi Norman, it's Steve.
Hello, how you doing?
Doing great.
Good. Jay? Who else?
We can go through all the remote staff first if you like.
Okay, go for it.
So Bill, why don't you say hi?
He's probably muted, he could probably just read out the names.
So what I'm showing as attendees, we have Bill, Lillabridge, Brad Shelton, Kareem's in her office as well. We already said hi to Eric, George Hits is with us, and Loretta Strickland is with us as well. And then here in the conference room, there's me, Crystal of course.
Delwyn?
Chuck?
Terry? Chantel.
And Maria.
Great.
Great.
So we'll go through attendance officially. Chairman Norman Wright?
Here.
Commissioner David Radford. Commissioner Kathy Romer.
Here.
Commissioner Jerry Trabish. Commissioner Eric Olson.
Here.
Great. So I am going to turn over the talking to Delwyn first. As soon as I get his PowerPoint presentation pulled up. So you should all be able to see his PowerPoint on your computer screens. And I'm gonna turn it over to him.
All right, thanks Chantel.
I'm not Chantel.
I mean.
Boy, who got the promotion or demotion?
I was a little distracted there. Thanks Crystal.
You're welcome.
So how we've structured this meeting is that we're gonna go through the Financial and Match Report Training that's available on our website for all districts. And then I'm gonna run through those slides, through that training, then turn it over to Maria, who's going to go through how we administer the process here on the commissions and the current situation, and she'll lead you through that, and then introduce some some new steps that we're we're gonna add to increase accountability and the transparency. So I really this is such an important training, and it's it's kind of laborious in that there's a lot of slides, but it's fairly detailed, and I we developed it this way so that in order to answer as many questions as we could for district staff and district supervisors with with them having to just run through at one time and and understand the nitty gritty of a financial and match report. So bear with me, and and I'm gonna I'm gonna go through it starting with slide number one. Welcome to the Financial Match Report Training. And I apologize, I'm gonna basically read these slides off. I know that's not how to do PowerPoints, but that's the only way I know. So the goal of this training is to provide you with information that will clear up uncertainties you may have related to the Financial and Match Report. To get maximum value from this training, we suggest you keep it handy so you can readily refer to it while completing your report. Just page down.
Just run the PowerPoint. That's it. You have your notes and stuff?
Yes.
You can just run the PowerPoint.
Okay.
From the beginning. Just hit play. I don't know how you have timed.
Well, yeah, I don't want.
Or you can just go up the top.
It just said from beginning, and then you can just hit return and return.
Okay.
Okay, so it's just gonna, yeah, it's just gonna run. And then you hit enter for next slide.
Yeah, okay.
There you go.
Thank you Crystal. The District Financial and Match Report is documentation certified by the Conservation District Board of Certified Supervisors that documents local funds and services that were received by the district during the previous fiscal year and qualify for state match. It also describes how state match and base base and match funds were utilized during the previous fiscal year. Financial and match reports serve to document our, both districts and the commissions, responsible management of state funds, and also helps to demonstrate the value district provide districts provide to the state. Financial match reports also provide the basis for the allocation of match funds to districts. The amount of match funding distributed to districts each year is based on the verified value of match-eligible local funds and services received by districts during the previous year. The Financial and Match Report is the vehicle used to document the value of match-eligible funds and services districts received during the previous year. In fact, districts are required to submit the Financial Match Report and the Five-Year Plan and Performance Report before base and match funding allocations can be distributed to them. And that's in accordance with IDAPA 60040501103. The fine print, Financial and Match Reports are required pursuant to code. The procedures to be followed by districts and the commission to implement statute are established by IDAPA 600504. Policies adopted by the commission further define how the statutes and rule are to be implemented. And finally, the Attorney General's Office provides advice and interpretations of relevant statutes and rules as needed to guide our implementation of those statutes and rules. Financial and match reports provide reasonable assurances that the commission is administering state funds allocated to districts in accordance with state fiscal policy, as enumerated in the State Fiscal Policy Policies Manual. The objectives of state fiscal fiscal policy are: One, effective and efficient operations; Two, reasonable use of public funds; and Three, compliance with applicable laws, rules, and regulations. Financial match reports are due August 16th each year. Financial and match reports with all supporting documents are due to us, to the commission, no later than August 16th of each year. Note that due to changes implemented late in fiscal year 2018, the due date was extended to August 31st for 2018 reports only. And the next slide shows where to submit your financial match reports. Any questions on that section of the training?
This is Kathy Romer. I do have a question.
Okay.
Get back here. So, one thing I noticed going through the statute, also then some of the rules. When you go back to slide, let me get that up here. Where it says, districts are required to submit the Financial and Match Report and the Five-Year Plan and Performance Report. Yeah, I don't have the number, is it slide five?
Yes, it is.
Before base, okay, so then there's been a couple places here, like I printed it out. So let's see, the rules, and I know you're citing code there, but in some of the rules, the funding criteria, it says criteria considered by the commission to determine the amount of base of match funding, et cetera, et cetera. It says, and this may be a question for Chantel, it says the following documents may be required on an annual basis in order to consistently apply the criteria to all districts. And it lists those documents as the Five-Year Plan, Financial and Match Report, and Performance Report. So, is it required, I mean, what difference, Chantel, does may or shall, or does that really mean anything? Or does the statute override? I mean, how does the the rule on that and the statute, how do they come together there when it says may be required? And does that filter down into the agency's policy requirements?
Chairman Wright, Commissioner Romer, I I think you're right, is in terms of what reports the commission requires to be able to distribute match funds, that is somewhat discretionary with the commission. And I think if you go back to the slide with the code sections, how that works. It's funny you did this, because I made a note of this, thinking someone was gonna ask about this. So if you go back up to the page with the code sections, so 222718, that's the part of Idaho Code that establishes the powers of the commission. 21, 222721, specifically in that code section, there is a requirement that boards of supervisors provide the commission information the commission requests in order to do its job. And so when you combine that with the duty of the commission to distribute match funds for funds that are eligible, I believe what the rule is indicating in here is that the commission at some point decided that the performance the districts.
Wait, what were you saying?
Five-year plan.
Yeah, the Five-Year Plans, Financial and Match Reports, and Performance Reports were those things that at the time it was felt were needed to, for the commission to be able to effectively do its job of distributing match funds in accordance with 27222727.
Okay, so when that policy then per se was adopted, then it took a it took a presentation, and then a vote of the commission members that were in office at that time, correct?
Yeah, I think, so in terms of if you all decided,
Okay.
Yeah, if you decided you didn't need a Five-Year Plan, I think that the way that the rule is written now with may, that's probably a discretionary decision. I think in terms of, I and that's something Delwyn and and Maria probably can answer better for you all, is what information those provides that's necessary for that. I'm not as familiar with the Five-Year Plans. But I guess I my suggestion from a legal standpoint is that you all require to be reported the information that you need in order to make a determination as to whether or not claims are eligible.
Well, it was kind of a process question, and you've answered my question, so thank you very much.
Are there any other questions? Okay, we'll hurry along then to the next section of the training. Which are the basics of the Financial Match Report. The Financial and Match Report includes a match funding worksheet, a description description of how state base and match funds were utilized during the previous year, documents supporting each donation of funds received, a letter of support from each donating entity, and a certification page signed by a district supervisor. The Financial and Match Report template that includes all related commission forms is emailed to each district in May or early June each year as an Excel file, and is available from the commission district support staff in Boise as an X file, Excel file, and is also available on the commission website as a PDF file. To access the Financial Match Report template on the commission website, this slide goes through the clicks you'll make to to get a copy of that report template up. The Financial Match Report template, once it's open on your computer, computer, you'll see across the bottom of the Excel version, five colored tabs. Select a tab to open that section of the report. If using the PDF version, scroll from page to page. So the first tab is the red tab. If you click on that, it opens the cover sheet, which goes through some basics of the Financial Match Report. The cover sheet lists the five required elements of the Financial Match Report. The match funding worksheet, a description of how state-based match funds were utilized during the previous fiscal year, a copy of the checker warrant, a deposit slip, or other record of deposit for each local funds donation reported on the match funding worksheet. A standard letter of support that has been completed and signed by an authorized representative. And it stipulates on this, in this training, on this slide, that a completed standardized letter of support is the only form of support letter that will be accepted. Donations not supported by a standardized letter of support will not be eligible for match funding. And finally, their bullet number five on the cover sheet is a certification page signed by a district supervisor. Donated funds or services reported on the match funding worksheet must be supported by all the documents on this list in order to be eligible for match. Any questions on that section of the training?
Delwyn, how much problems do we have with people not submitting a standardized letter? Or is that a real mute issue at this point?
It is, it is still, it's an ongoing problem, but Maria's done a lot of good work to clean it up in the last two years since she's been administering the program, and continuing to to train and and inform districts that the standardized letter, actually this year was the first year that the standardized letter of support was requested. And I think she she made a lot of progress to getting that to happen. Previous to this year, we were still getting letters of support, or letters of intent from counties, which haven't been useful for our process since 2010. But, so it's it's been an uphill effort, but we're we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. Any other questions? So we'll move now into the match funding worksheet, which is the yellow tab on that Excel spreadsheet, and this is what the match funding worksheet looks like when you pull it up. You see in bold red type up towards the top, it says, "Report only local funds and services which you believe are eligible for state match" on this worksheet. Then there's a section for local funds and a section for local services. And the match funding worksheet is where districts report match-eligible funds and services they received during the previous fiscal year. I already spoke to this notice, it's at the top of the of the page, "Report only funds and services that are eligible for match" on the match funding worksheet. When you have completed this training, you will be able to determine which of the funds and services your district received last year are eligible for match. So the allocation rule tells us that funds and services received in the previous fiscal year from local units of government and organizations for the general purposes of a conservation district are eligible for match. What do these words mean? We're gonna go through the language used in the rule, phrase by phrase, to clarify exactly which funds and services are and which are not eligible for match. First term we're gonna address, I'm gonna there'll be a series of slides with the 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 term that's coming up that we're gonna address in red. So the first term that is this, "Funds and Services Received." Relative to funds, "Received" means the funds were deposited into the district bank account. A deposit slip or bank statement is required to verify the date of receipt. The date of deposit determines when funds were received, not the date the check was drafted, or the date the district took possession of the check. Relative to services and in-kind donations, a donation was received on the date the service was performed, or the in-kind donation physically came into the possession of the district. Moving on, let's look at the phrase, "In the previous fiscal year." "In the previous fiscal year" means during the most recently completed state fiscal year, July 1 through June 30. For example, 2018 reports used to calculate fiscal 2019 match allocations include funds deposited into the district bank account and services received in fiscal 2018. That is from July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018. The next term is "Local Units of Government." A local unit of government is any general or special purpose political subdivision of the state that is located in whole or in part within the boundaries of the district. Counties and cities are local governments that commonly provide match-eligible funds to districts. Native American tribes and state agencies like ISDA, IDFNG, and IDEQ are not local units of government. Funds and services received in the previous fiscal year from local units of government and organize, oh, what the term we're looking at here, I'm sorry, is "Local Organizations." We just dealt with local units of government, so now we're looking at local organizations. A local organization is a group of two or more persons structured and managed to pursue pursue a collective goal on a continuing basis that is located in whole or in part within the boundaries of the district. An organization may be either for-profit, for example Walmart and Simplot, or nonprofit, for example Trout Unlimited and Pheasants Forever. A family, a husband and wife qualify as an organization. Individuals do not. The next term we're gonna deal with is "General Purposes." General purposes are not specifically defined in the rule. However, funds and services received for certain activities are identified as not meeting the general purposes requirement. These include donations designated for a special project, for example educational tours, implementation projects, financial audits. General purposes or other forms of support that are not that do not meet the general purpose requirement are funds or services used as required match for specific grants or projects. For example, 319 grants or coordinated weed management areas. And also fee for service or sales receipts, for example tree sales, equipment rental, administrative fees received are not not considered to be meeting the general purposes of the district. Funds and services received by a district in support of these sorts of activities are not eligible for match. You know funds were received for the general purposes of the district when the district is completely free to spend those funds in whichever way it chooses. That is, the donating entity has placed no restrictions on how their donation may be utilized. Funds the donating entity provided with the expectation that would they would be used for a specific project are not considered general purposes funds, and are not eligible for match, even if the special project supports the general purposes of the district. For example, if your annual, let's say in your annual work plan, improving water quality and quantity is identified as top priority of your conservation district. A local municipality asks your district to partner with them on development of an irrigation system for a city park. The irrigation system will be designed to improve water quality by eliminating irrigation-induced soil erosion and conserve water by system efficiencies. The municipality donates $10,000 to your district. With the agreement, the money will be used to pay irrigation system-related expenses. Your district commits to providing financial match dollars and/or technical assistance, which will be earmarked for this project. Clearly, projects which improve water quality and conserve water serve the general purposes of the conservation district. So, do the funds provided by the municipality in this example qualify for state match? The answer is no. The reason is because though the project serves the district's general purposes, the city provided funds for a specific or special water quality and/or quantity improvement project. Had the city money not been intended for a special project, your district would have been free to spend it on any water quality or quantity improvement projects anywhere in the district. For example, a pivot on crockland 60 miles from the city, or a livestock watering facility on range land in the far northeast corner of the county, et cetera. In summary, to qualify for match, local funds and services must meet the following criteria. Be received from a local unit of government or or organization. Be provided for the general purposes of the district. Be received during the previous fiscal year. Entities who donated must provide a letter of support. And districts must provide a copy of each check or warrant received, and a copy of a deposit slip or bank statement showing the date of the deposit. Funds and services that do not qualify for match include any federal funds or services, any state funding, funds received from the sale of district assets, funds or services designated for a special project, individual landowner contributions, funds pledged towards the required match of a grant or project, and the value of donated or volunteered time, including that of district supervisors. Additional guidance related to match eligibility of funds and services received by a district includes support of a district fundraising project is eligible for match if the support meets all criteria for eligibility. Thus, if it if trees for a tree sale are stored in space donated by a local government or organization, the value of that space is eligible for match. I use that example because we've, that's one we see not infrequently, or at least from time to time. There's also some limits on the amount of donated office space eligible for match. This was new this past year as well. Maximum number of square feet that is eligible for match is 200. A local entity may donate more than 200 square feet of office space to a district, but only the value of the first 200 square feet will be eligible for match. There's also a limit on the value of donated office space as it relates to the value per square foot. For the purposes of determining the amount of match a district is eligible to receive, the maximum value which can be placed on donated office space is $18 square foot per year on a fully serviced lease basis. If necessary, the lease rate may be adjusted upward in order to reflect local market rates. Verification. The commission may take whatever steps it deems necessary to verify that information provided on district financial and match reports is true and accurate. Such steps may include requesting additional information from the district, contacting and obtaining documentation from any other person or organization the commission believes is necessary. If commission staff encounter an instance of fraud, they will follow the guidance provided by the state, which quote, "If you encounter an instance of fraud, after you have informed your appropriate management, contact the Attorney General's Office." And that's a fiscal activities guideline that comes to us from the Office of the State Controller. Any questions on that section of the training?
I've got a couple. Go back to slide 31, please.
There you go.
Okay, you gave Delwyn here examples of state agencies. Based on what we know is IDWR would be one too, right?
Yes, it would.
Okay, so we could have had that as an example, correct?
That would be an example of an of a agency which if it provided funds to the district, those funds would not be eligible for match, correct?
That's what I'd say. Okay, how about slide 48?
Let me navigate, try to navigate over there.
Okay, this $18, I assume we, how did we come up with that dollar amount? Is it justifiable? How's that for an answer, question?
Yeah, we went through a process in determining how much to allow that they considered the the rate that NRCS charges us for office space in the field offices that we cohabitate with them in. We also looked at what the value of the of the space that we rent here in the water center is currently at.
Okay. Now, which makes sense in my book, now are we gonna have to relook at that figure every year and adjust?
It is, the the way we wrote it up in our reference manual, it is subject to review every year. If if somebody that's in rented space, donated space like that approaches us and lets us know that that they believe that the current market value of leased office space in their location is greater than the 18 square feet, then we would have to look at that. And we actually, as part of the process that we And we actually, as part of the process that we, that we adopted back in June, I think it was, we have a, a process by which a district can provide the kind of documentation we would look for in order to bump that rate up.
And the reason I'm asking that question, I know that the water resource center there increases our rent every year of some percentage. Do we need to add that every year, like increase that way too there, or just let people come to us and ask for more?
I don't have a preference, you know, we could, we could build in a, an annual increase and do it that way, or take it on a basis.
Right, that decision doesn't have to made today. You can chew on it and think about it, okay?
That's good, appreciate that Chairman.
Thank you.
I have a question about the standardized letter of support. You don't have to go back there necessarily, but you just define that in the beginning of one of these first slides, and then as you go down through there, then you just say letter of support. So what constitutes a standardized letter of support? Meaning on that word standardized, what does that, does that set it apart from just being a letter of support? I mean, I know it's the same thing, but what do you, what do you determine a standardized letter of support?
Well, what we're referring to, what's standardized about it is we standardized versus just a letter of support. Over the years, we've, we've accepted letters of support that could have been crafted by the county that provided a donation, or by the district itself that received the donation, or, so we were receiving letters of support that were, that varied a great deal from one another, and some of them contained the language that, that we need to have in a letter of support. And when I say need, I mean, in order to, in order to serve the purpose of providing verification that these funds were provided for the general purposes, it needed specific language that related to that. And so what we did was we, we crafted a letter of support, which is very close to the one we'd been providing a template of to districts for quite a number of years, but we said we're going to require this, this is what's going to be required. And there's some important, there's some important note, new notations on that letter. For instance, under the signature line, which has to be signed by the representative, the donating entity, there's some language to the effect that by signing this, he is, he is. Yeah, we can't, so we don't have a copy from.
Do you want to see the standardized letter? Because it, Karina just came in, she says it's listed on the website. We can pull it up from the website.
It is, it is, yeah. Would you like to do that?
Would you like to see what he's referring to? I can help Delwan pull it up on the computer on the website.
Yeah.
If you want to, but I mean, if it's available, I could probably look at it myself. It's not in the reference manual, is it?
No, it's not in the reference manual, it's in the, in the financial and match template underneath the district resources.
I can find it, yes, I've been through that material, so.
Well, would anybody else like us to pull that up?
Let's look at it.
Okay.
Okay.
Here we go, Crystal's, Crystal's on it.
I just did delve into all the templates.
You know where it is.
Yeah, yeah.
You can use this mouse if it's easier for you. And then I'll help you get that PowerPoint going.
Okay.
I got your back.
Appreciate that. Okay, folks, here's the standardized letter of support. It, oh, not coming up on the screen. Crystal's getting it up on the screen. Is it on yours?
You guys are still seeing the, the PowerPoint?
No, I'm looking at, I was looking at the, you just had the letter up there and it just went away.
Yeah.
Okay.
There it is.
Yeah, there it is, I see it.
Okay.
She's showing this like the second screen now.
Oh, okay. So that, this is the letter of support, what we're calling now the standardized letter of support. And we're saying, and the position we've taken in what is the guidance in, provided in our reference manual, is that this is the only documentation of support from a, from a local unit of government or organization that is acceptable. And this standardized thing so that we know that the, the right language is in there.
Yeah.
There.
So it should be relatively convenient then, for these letters of support to be provided from the district, correct?
Yes.
Because of what you're providing here.
Yes, they can.
And use this, basically.
That's right, and in the Excel template that I send them, or that Maria sends them to their emails, they can actually complete this electronically if that's what they wanted to do, and then print it off and have the donating, a representative from the donating agency make sure his signature is on it as well, and, and then you're good to go.
Okay, very good, I appreciate that.
Okay, now Crystal's going to help me get back to the PowerPoint. Okay. Everybody see the PowerPoint slide number 48 there?
Yes.
Okay, so we've been through that, and we, were there any other questions on this section of the match, the match funding worksheet section? Hearing none. We'll continue on to the blue tab, which is the utilization of state funds report. And this is a brand new requirement this year, and the reason it's required is because it's clearly stated in statute that, that we've got, that that has to be a part of the, of the report. And for some reason, we just had, had blown past that in previous years and never required that. So this is, this is a fairly new requirement, and I think Maria did a good job of getting everybody cool accustomed to the idea of, of what it is we're requiring, what, what this report is looked, is supposed to look like. So we're, we're requiring this in order to comply with, I'm sorry, it was with ADAPA 60504, not actual statute, but it replaces the district funding summary, a component of pre-2018 financial and match reports, which is not required by statute or rule, and so has been removed as a required component of the financial match report. Districts are to use this report to describe how state-based and match funds were utilized during the previous fiscal year. You may use the space provided in the financial and match report template, or create the report in your word processor, just to make it as easy as possible for folks. The minimum level of detail required in this report is to break expenses into the following three categories, if applicable, and indicate how much of the district base and match funds were spent on each. And you see the three categories would be personnel, operating costs, and district conservation projects. Consider using the utilization of state funds report as an opportunity to toot your district's horn. Be proud of your good stewardship of state funds. Any questions on the utilization of state funds report section of the financial match report? Then we will go on to the green tab, which is the letter of support, which we went through in some level a few minutes ago. Level of support from each entity that provided match eligible funds or services must be submitted with the financial and match report. The standardized letter of support is the only form of support letter that will be accepted. Donations not supported by a standardized letter of support will not be eligible for match funding. A copy of the standardized letter of support is also available in Appendix G of the district reference manual. The letter of support must be complete. All the information asked for must be provided. And that includes name of the donating entity, date, name of conservation district, year, itemized lists of services, funds and services donated with values, signature of an authorized representative of the donating entity, printed name of the authorized rep, title of the signatory, mailing address of the donating entity, and phone number of the donating entity. The letter of support must be signed by a person authorized by the local unit of government or organization. Entities that donate services must use the letter of support to list, describe, and declare the value of each specific work product provided to the district. And here's some, here's an example. In the space below, itemized funds and services. This is right off of the financial and match report standard, standardized letter of support. So somebody there received GIS services, it was broken out, the access to planning and parcel maps, detailed map of culvert location, detailed maps of, of watershed. That's the level we now require, not just GIS services, 3,200 bucks, it needs to be broken out like that. Questions on the letter of support? Let's go then to the purple tab to open the financial and match report certification page. This is what it looks like. A certification must be completed, signed by a district supervisor, and submitted with each financial and match report. It is extremely important that the district supervisors study and, and understand everything in the financial and match report, because by signing the certification, supervisors formally confirm that the information presented in the report is true and accurate. This is one of the solemn responsibilities that comes with having been elected or appointed to serve on the governing board of a conservation district. Staff can help supervisors by developing financial and match reports with all the necessary documentation presented in an easy-to-follow fashion, and having a draft report ready for their review well in advance of the due date. It helps supervisors to providing adequate time on meeting agendas, so supervisors are able to study the report thoroughly before certifying it as true and accurate. Any questions on the certification?
Yeah, just clarification maybe, it says certification, this Kathy Rummer. Certification must be completed, signed by a district supervisor. Is that necessarily the chairman or any one supervisor? And then you go on to explain that supervisors must be aware of what they're doing and knowledgeable and whatnot. So do they do that, maybe you don't know, but do they do that by vote? For example, we as a board authorize so-and-so to sign the certification? Or what kind of process are they following there? Do you know?
Let me ask the first one, the first one, it says on the certification page, it is a supervisor. It does not have to be the chair that signs that. And I think that's the way all of our certification pages are, and as I understand it, the reason it doesn't stipulate that it has to be the chairman is because if it comes up and the report is due, this report or plan or whatever else item is due to the commission, and they're not going to have another board meeting, and the supervisor, or the chairman is unable to attend the meeting at which the, the financial match report is presented, we wanted to be able for, so a supervisor, any supervisor could sign it. As far as whether they vote on it, I, it's supposed to be a formal board action, a formal action of the board, that's right.
Commissioner Rummer, if I could add to that, in, in the rules specifically, so this is in the district allocation rules, under 11 subsection 3 subsection A, it provides that the board of supervisors, supervisors shall certify in writing that the district has examined all documents and that the statements and representation are true. So from my perspective, it has to be a board decision, so it would need to be something that happens at a meeting with a vote.
To authorize a specific supervisor to sign? Or if they just voted, voted to certify then, anyone that was present during that or voted on that to sign it, basically?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Dude, let me just, while we're on that though, Chantel and Commissioners, does that language in this PowerPoint need to be cleaned up? Stipulate that, that it has to be a board action, because I really don't make that point.
I voted in strength, please, Delwan.
Okay. What was that, Chairman?
Yes, sir. I said I think that you should add that to your PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you Chairman. Is there any other?
It really, you know, it protects the district supervisors, I think as a whole as well, you know, and you're calling them to their responsibility and so, you know, it's really a way of protecting them too, by not getting caught in something that maybe they didn't actually see.
Absolutely, I agree with that. Thank you Commissioners. Anything, any other questions or discussion on the certification page?
I have none, thank you.
Okay. And the, the training wraps up with Maria's contact information and my own contact information, and, and that brings this to a close. I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over now to Maria, who's going to who's going to go through another PowerPoint.
More PowerPoints, yay!
More power too.
And while we transition, I heard a ding on the teleconference. Did someone join us, or were they just calling back in because they got disconnected?
My name is Pete Whitman, I'm Kennesaw, Bush County. Today, I'm gonna misread the agenda on mountain time.
That is okay, Pete, we do have the go-to meeting portion being recorded, so that if you'd like, we can, we can send that out to you, so you can go over things.
Okay, thank you.
So is everyone seeing the financial and match reports of the new PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah.
I am, Kathy Rummer.
Perfect, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. President, Commission members, and the first thing I'd like to do is give a shout out to Crystal for her lots of work to make this happen, both before today and during our meeting today. Put a lot of effort into today's presentations. So today I'm going to talk about, from my perspective, how we process the financial and match reports, to get from the submission of the reports, all, all the way through all of our processes to the final allocation out to the districts. So that's what we'll take a look at today. This first slide is a representation of the entire process, and I think of these processes as having two sides. One is our internal processes, where we're looking at all the documentation that's required for the financial match reports, and then once the staff is And then once the staff is through with our analysis, then we go outside of the staff to the district allocation working group and to the commission to to give them our recommendation and all the way to the commission decision about the allocation of resources. So this is a quick overview. We receive the reports and we begin our staff evaluation. All of the certification page worksheet, da, 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 da. Those are the documents that are required that each district must have before we take the whole package into our external process, which means setting meeting dates and public notice and getting copies to everybody and following along on our process to, to make sure that we're being efficient and complete at the same time. So I'm going to walk you through that in hopefully a, a way that's understandable. So these are the different documents that are required. Delwin just went through most of them. I'm not going to spend any time on the certification page. That's pretty cut and dried. They, they sign that. It, I think that will add the clarification to the districts that that has to be a board action. I'm not sure that, that we've ever discussed that detail in, with the districts. So we'll add that to our information. So these are some of the ADAPA rules that guide the decisions that we make when determining if the stuff, if the documents that have been submitted are, meet our requirements. And the first thing I do is I look at the reference manual. I read code and I read ADAPA again. And I keep those close by because I, I find myself looking back at them often to make sure I am making decisions per the guidance of those documents. So what the, the districts submit their reports and that they come in starting in, let's say July, and I begin my review as soon as they come in. I take them, you know, report by report. And that's, that starts off this process of communicating back and forth to the districts about all of these required documents. So since we're skipping the certification page, we'll, we'll jump right to the match fund worksheet. This is what I look at first, and this is an example of the type of things that make me look a little bit more closely. And here you see on their match fund worksheet, they have two donations from the county. One is cash and one is what they're calling cash funds and, but it's dispersed per quarter. So that's a little bit unusual. So I went to their supporting documentation, which is their bank deposit. And there I see that they're getting these quarterly reports from the USDA. So I call the district and I ask them about that. And they tell me that the Forest Service has a desk in their building, in the, in the little building that they that the county allows them to use. And these are rental payments for that space. So I say to them, well, you know, we can, we cannot match funds that come from the federal government. And they say, well, you know, it's just a more efficient way to do it. And I, and can we submit more information to you? And I said, sure. So they submitted this letter from the Forest Service that said, you know, we send the payment directly to the district rather than to the county, figuring that's more efficient. And it might be more efficient, but that, it doesn't make it eligible for match. So in this instance, I, I contacted the county and said, I'm sorry, but we, we cannot match that. Just the type of thing we see. Here's another thing that we see on the match fund worksheet, very similar where multiple lines from the same donor for what looked to me like some pretty specific items. They don't look like general purposes. So although they could be general purposes, so I called up the district and asked them for clarification. And they were able to provide me with, I know this writing is too small to see, but it's a very detailed letter from the county explaining that they provide IT support to the district and explaining all the IT support that they have provided. And it's all for general purposes of the district. It was just a great letter and very specific, but also clearly illustrating that they were supporting the IT system for the district. And sure enough, that can get complicated, but the letter was very clear about that. So we were able, I recommended and it went all the way through. And these funds, these in-kind services were matched for this district. So here's one more for you, the match fund worksheet. Oh, I see a donation from an individual. There's a line in the sand for us. So I look at the check and the check has two people's names on it. So Delwin mentioned this, that a family is an organization, an individual isn't an organization. So I don't get down into the weeds about who's a family and who's not a family. My interpretation of that is if you're sharing money, you better be family. But the way I looked at this was that this check, both people were making a financial commitment. Ergo, it was eligible, eligible for match. So that's what we recommended. All right, one final one. Again, we, and the county, the, I'm sorry, the district had called me about this. And I said, well, send us your information and we'll take a look at it. One of their supervisors donated materials and labor for what turned out to be a project. And so when they provided me with this information, the more I looked at it, the more I thought, that looks pretty specific project. And, you know, they even provided me with a receipt from the contractor and it clearly is specific. And when I talked to the district about this, what I told them was if this contractor had dropped off a bunch of irrigation pipe that was, you know, surplus that he had hanging around in his warehouse or something, that would have been one thing. But this was for a specific project. And so it's not eligible for match. So that's the math, match fund worksheet. So we go through that, checked, checked off that box. And now we move on to looking at the checks. So those are usually pretty cut and dried. This one caught my eye this time. Both West and East Cacha districts received donations from the county and they both came from the weed and pest fund. I don't know why I never noticed this in previous years, but I didn't. So I called up the county and I said, why is this from the weed and pest fund? And so they went back and did a bunch of research and they said, it's been like that for at least eight years and we don't know why. But it is for the general purposes of the district. It is not project related. And so I recommended it for match and we did end up matching it. And as sort of a side story, the county went in and amended their budget and these dollars now come out of their general fund. So that'll clean up that a little bit. I don't have an, the example of this, but I had another check that was made out to both the administrative assistant and the district. So that was a little funky. But on their bank statement that they submitted, it clearly showed that it got submitted, that it got deposited into the district bank account. But those are kind of some of the little oddities that can come through every once in a while. All right, we have the checks done. We're getting there. So the next thing to look at is deposit slips. The big thing with deposit slips is Delwin went over this in some detail that received equals deposited. And it has, the, the deposit has to occur in the previous fiscal year, which is July 1 to June 30. So this, this deposit slip was submitted this past year. All these examples are from the last year. And you can see it wasn't deposited until July 6 of 2018. So unfortunately, and this is hard for the districts, I know, but we can, this cannot be matched. It can be matched next year, but not this year. And, you know, they just had some staff turnover and the new staff didn't realize the importance of getting this deposited and it's a difficult situation, but but it's clear, but you know, the rule is clear that it has to be the previous fiscal year. So this district will be able to submit this for match for next year. We'll go to get the deposit slips done, check that off. Next, letters of support. We just went through that in great detail. I will add to that. Delwin very kindly said that I was getting this situation under control to, so that we don't get any letters of support. I'm, I'm sorry, letters of intent anymore. And I do get pushback from the districts about using this form. It's fine. Some counties want to put it on their letterhead. That's fine. The pushback I get is that the count, because the counties want to sign it in a, in a meeting, they want it to be a, an action of the commissioners. But that takes a lot of time. So my advice to the districts has been to get this form to the counties as soon as they can. As soon as the county decides they're going to donate money, plop this in front of them and ask them to put it through their process for them. We have to have it. It's a line in the sand. So I've had some very direct discussions with the districts about this requirement, but I will say that compliance is, is up 90% of what it was even a year ago. So that's good. I, I think, you know, the district sees some turnover. There've been some, there's always changes in requirements. So this was one they just had to get up to speed to, but they've done that really well. So we have the letter of support. Yay! Now we have is the utilization of the base and match from the previous fiscal year. I wanted to show you a couple really beautiful examples of how the districts complied with that. Delwin went over what are requirements there, are there? I, I found that the, the biggest obstacle for the districts here was that that the numbers they gave me didn't match what they actually received in base and match funding. So there was a lot of communication back and forth to make those numbers match up. But you can see that this district did that for me. They just did a beautiful job. You know, it doesn't have to be fancy. It doesn't have to go into a great deal of detail. The requirement is to just let us know what you spent those dollars on. And here's another one. More simple, but spelled out for us. This is what we spent our base funds on. This is what we spent our match funds on. Boom, boom. Beautiful. Absolutely beautiful. All right. So we have everything done. Yay! We've done our internal processes. Now we're off to our external processes. And that means moving to the right of the blue bar for our meetings with the dog, with the commissioners. All of those things that, those require public notice. Crystal helps out quite a bit with that and pulling together all the documents for the meetings, da, 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 da. And if all goes well, the commission votes to allocate the funds to the districts. We get that invoice to the accounting staff. And then finally, at long last, the funds go out to the district. So we're going to look at that process in a little more detail here. The first thing we do is to, and, and this is somewhat of a flexible process, but we set the meeting dates for the dog and the commission. So we contact dog members and ask them to serve and they're very, they very graciously agreed to do that. And last year we did a doodle poll, poll, poll to determine a, a meeting date for the dog. We noticed those meetings. Crystal does that for us. So we go through, we get copies to the dog members. We have our meeting. The dog makes a recommendation. We create a spreadsheet with the dog recommendations and also with comments that the dog and or staff might have for the commission. And this year we're adding into the process sending all of these recommendations to the districts along with information about how to participate in the commission meeting. The appeal process, there's a judicial appeal process that we'll talk a little bit about later. We include the recommendations. And again, info about the commission meeting, the date and time, how to call in or if we're going to do a meeting like this, how to get into a meeting like this. And we're, we'll to let them know that there is a judicial appeal process. That's a 28 day window that they have to meet. Information like that. We're also going to ask them that if they want to contest the recommendations that they, they put the intent in writing to us before the commission meeting. That, that's how we see it now. So, so we've added those, those steps to our process. Then we'll move to the commission meeting. And we discovered while going through our process through a fine tooth comb, that there is a, an appeal process that's available to the districts. And so that's a, they have 28 days from the decision of the commission to appeal that decision. So we now have a 28 day window to wait and see, to see if anyone files an appeal. And if they do, if they don't, depending on how we work through those details, hopefully we get an invoice to the accounting staff and then move right on to funds to districts. So the couple, we used to just go straight from the commission meeting right to invoicing, sending the invoice to our accounting staff. Now we've added a couple extra steps. But that's okay. They're good steps and hopefully they'll help people understand and participate in the process a little bit more easily.
So I have a question. I have a question about the appeals process, following your flow chart there. When a district appeals that, that will hold up every single other district's invoicing. Am I correct in that assumption?
Commissioner Wilson, yes, you are.
Okay. That's, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure that that was on the right track.
Yeah, because the way the, the, the allocations work is that we have a pot and a pot of money and each district, the calculation for how much money is matched is based on their donations. And there's a, there's an upper level where they top out. So an allocation for District A is dependent on the allocations for districts B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K. So if we pluck one of them out of that calculation, it affects everybody else. And we cannot, until we know if, if an appeal has been filed, we, we just can't complete those calculations.
So in other words, if, if a district, if a district is going to appeal, they better be very aware of the fact that they're going to hold up the entire state's allocations or every district in the state. So I hope that, that, that the people that are on this call right now that are, that are supervisors, if there's any with us, understand that, that, that you will be holding up all the funding for every district in the state. So I just, I just hope that they have a very good, a very good idea of when they're going to appeal, just exactly what that entails.
Well, we are, we have to hold up the funding for the 28 day window regardless if someone appeals or not. What happens if someone appeals is, I think, a topic for discussion for the commission at a later date. How, how the commission would like to handle that as a, as a process.
The way that I understand it is that this appeal process was not something we were observing, that it exists and is required. The districts are entitled to have a period when they can appeal it. We were going straight from commission decision to putting out the invoices to getting the checks in the mail. We're now aware that we can't do that. We have to wait 28 days.
I, I, one other question. Why, why, if, so Terry, if that's the case, then why are the, is the appeal window clear down to when we have our commission meeting? Why, why not have the appeal process back up when the dog, after they meet? How come, how come we don't do it that way? I just, it's just a question. I don't, I mean, that's probably a dumb one, but I, I want to know why. If that's the case, why not have the appeal process back towards the dog or after the dog meets? And, you know, that, or is it because it's not been discussed with the commission? Is there a legal, a legal proceeding there or what, what is the process exactly as to why it's not that way?
No answer. So Commissioner Olson, how the appeals process is set under the Idaho Administrative Procedures Act, which is a statute that says basically for any final decision any agency makes, everyone gets 28 days to appeal it no matter what it is. So that, that is a general legal requirement and that is the current appeals process that applies. And I think this hasn't been an issue because it's, it's never come up where there has been an appeal of, of a match distribution. The concern that we have been discussing about distributing funds before that 28 day period runs is how do we get that money back? If someone does appeal and wins the appeal and gets more money, we've already distributed that money to districts. They probably already spent that money. So just as a matter of caution and for, for practical purposes, waiting that 28 day period is going to avoid issues that would arise if someone ever did appeal that process for their allocation. So that, that's not, you all can change. That, the 28 days, it runs from the final decision of the commission. So it has to run from that final allocation decision that's made by the board.
I see. I understand.
Shantel, this is, this is Kathy Romer. So what you're talking about is just at this point in time now, looking at what is the statutory appeal process and then including it in the, the flow chart, which it was not included before. And that is a 28 day timeframe and that is when, so how does the district court thing come into play there?
Yeah.
That's where they appeal to, correct? Okay.
Exactly, Commissioner Romer. So they would have 28 days to file with a district court, a lawsuit, asking for judicial review is what it's called of the agency decision.
Okay. And I had a couple of quick questions. I, I should say, Eric, are you done? I didn't want to cut you off.
Yeah, I'm good. Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner.
So going back to the dog meeting now, Maria, thank you for asking me to serve on that district allocation working group. It was very enlightening. It was by conference call and whatnot. And I've only done one, new commissioner. I'm sure there are many, many that have gone before me. However, my take on that was in this last instance, we had the five dog members and we had good conversations, but we needed more information concerning one batch allocation request. And so that was when, and, and so this is sort of a quasi appeal, I think, to the dog. So Maria went back and got that information and then had a second phone call for the district allocation working group and presented that information. And at that point in time, there were only three members of the dog that came back to make that final decision as to whether or not the recommendation would be to match or not match that recommendation to the commission. So that was a little bit disconcerting to me. And I guess the other thing was too, what is the formality for the district allocation working group? Because it, it was sort of like, well, you know, do we take a vote? No, we don't really vote. And then in the end, when it was presented, they said, well, the dog voted. Well, I'm not sure what a vote is, what constituted a vote, if it was consensus. It just seemed a little filthy fine, but is it of importance or not? It, it seems to be of importance. We got to the point where there was quite a bit of, uh, let's see, dissatisfaction with the decision of the dog and ultimately the commission on this particular request. Does that all make sense?
Commissioner Romer, if I can address that. My, I'd, I'd have to go back and listen to the recording, but as I remember it, in that second meeting, we did take a vote and the vote was two to one to whatever the decision was. I don't even remember what the decision was. But as I remember it, the, it was a two to one vote. It was not unanimous. And I think we, 99.9% positive that we forwarded that information to the commissioners.
Yeah, no, I'm not disputing that. What I'm saying is, so I guess we would say yay or nay and that constitutes the vote. You know, because in, in the first one, you know, with the five members, my question was sort of, well, do we take a vote? No, we don't vote. But you know, you know what I mean? So I guess it's just the process of a, a nod of the head or a yay or nay will constitute a vote and that will then determine that, okay. It, it may sound kind of goofy, but I felt like, yeah, anyway.
Well, again, Commissioner.
It needs to be specified in the, in the beginning, you know, what is your vote? Not just like, what do you think or, you know what I mean? The finality of an actual vote that you can point to a person and this was their vote, basically.
Commissioner Romer, so am I understanding you correctly that you would like to take a vote after each of the district's reports are reviewed, like for every individual district?
Well, now that's, that's something I would have to think about.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd have to think about that. I'm just bringing that up because as a newcomer, it seems sort of unclear to me when you're dealing with such a, a decision that's important. You know, and to notate, you know, so and so voted yay, so and so voted nay. That, you see what I mean?
Yeah.
And if the majority concludes that it goes forward, then of course the nay vote is passed the tie. If the gays have it, you know what I mean?
Yep. No, I, no, I understand what you're saying. I'll add that to my little notes here and we'll take that up in the future.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you so much for hearing me through on that.
Oh, no trouble, no trouble at all. Thank you. Let's move on to the next slide. That might help clarify for you how this process works and the timeframes that we're working with. So we start with the financial and match reports and I've given myself two weeks to get those out to, to make copies and get everything out to the district allocation working group. Now that, that two weeks is a flexible timeframe. You know, if the district's reports are all perfect and they get them to me well before August 16th, well then that two weeks can shrink down. But if they don't, you know, there's some time involved there. So then I, the reports get sent off to the dog for their review for about 10 days plus or minus. And I'll just note that, well, we'll get to that later. So the dog has approximately 10 days to take a look at those. When I send those to the, the reports, I also send a copy of the reference manual and all the supporting documentation that might have come in. And da, 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 da. And of course, all the information about calling in to the meeting, to date, time, you know, codes, all that kind of stuff. Then we have the dog meeting, the dog developed, develops its recommendations. And then we've added this step here to send, and these are on previous slides, notice to the districts that has all the information I talked about before, the recommendations, the, the information about the commission meeting, when it is, what time it is, how to call in, information about the appeal process and a request that if they want to contest the recommendations of the dog and/or staff, if they're not the same thing, that they, that they put in writing their intent to contest the recommendation during the commission meeting. That's a request just to try and be more efficient and make things go more smoothly at the commission meeting. So then we go to the commission meeting. There, they have the authority to make the decision on allocations, which they do. That starts the appeal window. We send out to districts their approved allocations. We'll tell them again that the, that it's the start date for the appeal process. That's 28 days where we sit and wait. And then we hit the end date and depending on if appeals have been, been filed or not, but assuming they're not, then, you know, we'll have those invoices ready to go to our accounting staff and it takes, you know, a week plus or minus to get that through the state system. So that gives you a little bit more of a timeline of the gaps between specific actions that happen in our process. And hopefully this will help a little bit as well for you to understand the timeline for it going from the first step, financial and match reports, the due date coming into our offices, down to the ninth step, which is allocation for districts. And you'll see that there's, you know, there's flexibility between step one and step two. You know, depending on lots of factors. There's also flexibility between step two and step three. You know, if we can get reports out to the dog members earlier, so much the better. Because some, the one thing that happens in the beginning of September is Labor Day. So that means that people are taking their last summer flings and stuff like that. So we try and give the, the district allocation working group as much time as possible to look over all their reports. Come, you know, have any questions, anything like that, prepare to the meeting, for the meeting. So then we have the meeting with the dog. They make their recommendations. I send that notice out to the districts with all the information as well as to remind them that they have an opportunity to contest those recommendations. Then we, two weeks later, we have the commission meeting. And again, all of these are noticed publicly. Assuming the allocations are approved, you get down to some little writing the next day. That's all the information going out to the districts. And then we, that's the appeal start date window. So we go from September 26th to October 24th, you know, theoretically with, with no activity at all. We're just waiting on the appeal window. And assuming there are no appeals, we jump right into, well, you know, invoices to our accounting group and then a week later, the, which is November 1st, which is our target date. Those out, the allocations should be received by the districts. Is that helpful to, to everyone?
Very.
Good?
Yeah, looks good. Thank you.
So that ends my presentation. And I will stand for questions if anyone has anything at all about my presentation today or any other questions that, that cropped up while you were watching and listening.
I have no questions, Maria. Super excellent. Thank you.
Okay. You know, I, I did just notice a little note I had to myself here that attendance by the districts at the commission meeting where the allocation decision is being made, that has always been an option to the districts. What we're trying to do now is to, to make them more aware of that, to make the process more transparent and to encourage the districts to participate, whether they have any concerns or not. But I think it is really help, it would be really helpful to the districts if they could listen to the discussions that the commission has. And also that goes for the dog as well. I mean, it, both the dog and the commission take their responsibilities very seriously and they have great discussions about the allocation. So I really encourage the districts to participate in those meetings, whatever way they can.
Mr. Chairman, question, I guess, for Mr. Becker. We thought that this training and work study session would be particularly helpful for our commissioners. And there is an agenda item on the joint board meeting in January to discuss this same issue. I'm wondering if Mr. Becker feels it would be advantageous for his board to have this same presentation in preparation for that discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Steve.
Okay. Yeah, Terry. That's a tough one. I sat in on this one today just to see, I'm, I'm glad I sat in. I wish there would have been some more district participation. It is, as far as for a joint meeting, I, I don't know if we want to, I don't know if we want to dedicate this amount of time to go over this. I think we could do it a little. We could condense it a little bit and have the, I think it would be more important for us to kind of hit the highlights and have the discussion as opposed to having the whole full-blown slideshows.
Yeah, I think we could, we could definitely condense it somewhat, but my concern was, we heard a number of comments about the process is not clear. And there was not a level of familiarity among district, among our board with what the process actually is. And so if the purpose of the meeting is to give staff some sort of directions about how to make it more clear, I'm wondering if it is helpful for everyone to be on the same page and have the same understanding of what the process actually is.
Well, you're right. I mean, I think we could streamline a little bit. I really actually, I think Maria's slideshow that she presented today is, was probably more beneficial to me than Delwyn's presentation. But I, I'll kick around with everybody else on the board, Terry, but I don't think it would be a bad idea maybe to do both presentations.
Thanks, Steve.
And we'll visit about, we could, we could visit about that too. I'll kind of take a straw poll of what everybody has in mind, but I, I mean, I think we could rattle right through the slides. Another thing, Terry, that I really liked today. And you might do this, basically for Delwyn's slideshow, if he could actually record his voice for each of the, each of the slides. And if that could be on your website, I think that would be really good training for district supervisors to have.
And I think actually that Crystal has already taken care of that and we will be able to post it.
Well, we have the meeting, what, what we've gone through today recorded. So I will give that a listen and see if it's feasible, if it works well enough to, to post the recording of the meeting. If not, I can work with Delwyn to record the PowerPoint presentation itself and record him narrating it and post that. Right now, his PowerPoint is on the website, is my understanding, without any sort of narration. But if you feel a narration would help, I can work with him to, to see if we can make that happen.
I, I think that would be great. I, I think that would be great.
You know, Steve, uh, if we could make what Crystal just outlined work and could post it on our website, then you could maybe get your, uh, we could get anybody, but your board maybe could look at it at their leisure and it'd be self-explanatory. And then they'd come back and ask questions if they needed to.
Well, I think that, Norman, I think that's spot on. And I mean, and then we could actually, we could have that discussion then in January when we're together. And if, and if that timeframe, and we may not have enough time to quite do that. I mean, I think we could run through both slideshows at our meeting.
Yeah, and this is Maria, and you know, as the person that, you know, administers this, I will, I think the confusion and the frustration coming from the districts is because the devil's in the details. And all of the things that Delwin went over are important. And yes, they're tedious and sometimes they make you want to tear your hair out. But, but our decisions pivot on the, on those types of details. And so I really would encourage, uh, the districts to, to wade into those details. And, you know, you don't have to bite it all off at once. You can, you know, nibble away at it, but, um, those details are what guide our decisions. And I think some of the frustration is that people aren't as familiar with the details as they could be. You know, they are, it is tedious to look through all that stuff. But I think if they do, they'll have a better understanding, of, of how and why decisions are made the way that they are made.
And Chair, Chairman Wright, could I just comment? We've made some changes to the process. We're in the, in the process of, of making sure the process is, is effective and as fish, and as efficient as possible. And, uh, one, one thing that has been available, that, that long training that I went through has been available on our website. And I informed all the, all supervisors around the state whom I have email addresses for in May, that that, that training was available. So it's, it's there and, um, I just encourage, like Maria said, for all the reasons Maria cited, it's, in, those details are important and yeah, they are kind of, be laborious to get through, but it's worth it when you as a supervisor are going to sign, certify something that's true and accurate. You have to understand what you're signing, so.
Are we done?
Mr. Chairman, this is basically just for your, um, education. And, uh, I, I think probably now we can go forward to the joint board meeting and, and discuss it further. You can give us some direction. But thank you. I know it's after Christmas. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I just had a couple more questions related, this Kathy Romer, maybe to, under the, um, uh, transparency or information. If I may, if, if this is appropriate, let me know, but it probably.
Go right ahead. I gotta leave, so thank you. We'll talk to you later. Good luck.
Okay.
Bye, Norman.
Bye, Chairman.
So in the manual or reference guide or somewhere, Shantel, it's a 22 dash 2721, looks like L or something, Idaho code. All supervisors shall be landowners or farmers of the district where they are elected or appointed and shall be registered to vote in the state of Idaho. And then farther in that document, it says, uh, something about qualifications or all supervisors shall be landowners or operators, not necessarily farmers. Is, is, is that pretty strict across the state for, for supervisors? That they have to meet that criteria as a farmer or operator and a landowner? Does anyone have any background on that or experience that?
You know, Commissioner Romer, this is Shantel. I generally, I provide legal guidance to the commission and because sometimes the commission's interests and the district's interests don't always align, I, I don't provide legal guidance to the district. So generally, unless it's something you all need to know to do your, your job as the commission, it's not something I've ever looked at. So that, that's not something that I've ever looked at and that's kind of outside my realm, I think, of.
Okay, that's fine. It just, I just thought it was interesting and, and I appreciate that. That's more of a district thing. So, okay, that, that, that was one question I had as I've been perusing this material. So that's all. Thank you.
So the chairman left.
Yeah.
So.
The meeting, I think, is adjourned at this point. If anyone has questions, I think that's fine. The issue is anything that's discussed not in an open meeting that relates to a decision the commission's going to make needs to be put on the record if, when the commission makes that decision, if it influenced your decision at all. So if anyone, if, if you have any other questions, Kathy, for me, or if Eric, if you have questions for me also, feel free to email me and I can go through some of those with you. And I'm sure that goes the same for Delwin and Maria and everyone else.
Okay, that'll be perfect. Thank, thank you.
Yeah, that'd be good. Thank you, Shantel.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
If I can just reiterate one more time, asking, uh, districts to keep their email addresses current. And, uh, there are some supervisors where we do not have email addresses for them. And, you know, they don't want to provide them and that's okay. But I think that's, that's something, um, that, that, uh, that, that it would be nice if, uh, if, um, IASC D discussed that with the districts and encouraged them to have, um, more than one email address for each district. How's that? That's all I have. Thank you, everyone. It was a great meeting. We had great fun.
Thank you.
We appreciate all of you joining us today.
Thank you, Delwin, and thank you, Maria.
Have a great day, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Good job, Bead. I had a couple of questions.
Okay. Yeah, let's turn it off.